It's after one, this is appropriations and it's Thursday afternoon. And we're dealing with substance abuse and mental health. We're joined today by the Committee on Health and Human Services and we'll start off with[14.34][14.34]interviews, starting at my right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Roger Cates and I represent Augusta, China, Oakland, City, and Bassettboro in the state senate.
Good afternoon, I'm Louie Valentino and I represent State Senate District 31, which is Saco, Old Orchard Beach, Hollis, Lexington, and part of Oxford.
Good afternoon, I'm Jay Grant and I represent Gardner and Farmingdale in the House of Representatives.
I'm Representative Bob Nutting, I represent the towns of Oakland and City.
And hello, I'm Mary Serati and I'm proud to represent the individuals in House District 28, which is part of Spire Row.
Good afternoon, College and Justice, my name is Earl Five, I represent District 41, that part of that board and part of Oxford.
Hello, my name is Eric Jordan, I represent Portland in the House.
Good afternoon, my name is Jeff Jimley, I represent District 75, General Leader of the Department of Health and Human Services.
Hello, I'm Peggy Rotundo, I represent House District 59, which is part of Lewiston, and the House Chair of the Appropriations.
Senate Chair is Jim Hamper from Oxford, Senate District 19, 13 towns in western Maine, and with Health and Human Services on the inner horseshoe, Senator Braking.
I'm Senator Eric Brakey, I represent the people of Auburn, New Gloucester, Poland, Minnetonka, and Cannon Falls.
Good afternoon, I'm Drew Bettine, I'm the House Chair of the Health and Human Services Committee and I represent part of the city of Westboro.
Senator Ray Hassel, my district is a portion of Portland and a portion of Western Maine.
Good afternoon, my name is Scott Hamper, I represent South Portland and a portion of Kibbutz.
Hi, I'm Richard Malby, I live in the town of Hancock, I represent nine towns in eastern Hancock County, and the town of Skudan in western Washington County.
Good afternoon, I'm Cameron Bashon, I represent House District 29, which is coastal Spire Row.
Good afternoon, everybody, I'm Christine Bernstein, I represent District Number 96, seven towns, Walter County.
Good afternoon, my name is Peter Sacklin, I represent District 3, which is part of York, Wells, Sanford, and all of Gunkit.
My name is Frances Head, I live in Bepple, I represent District 17, which contains 20 towns, including Townships.
Good afternoon, I'm Deb Anderson, I represent 88, which is Chelsea, Whiteville, Jefferson, and Harsonville, Orlando.
Thank you, good afternoon, I'm Norm McCormick, I represent Senate District 14, which is 11 municipalities in Southern Connecticut.
And so we'll start off today with Commissioner Health and Human Services, Commissioner Mayhew, she's in the room, there she is. Hold up, turn the microphone on, working our way through your testimony. And like usual folks, it'll be a stop-start routine, so questions will be... We'll spare the usual introduction.
Well, I have a couple paragraphs in the interview that I'd like to share. I'll keep it brief. Senator Hamper, Representative Rotundo, Senator Brakey, Representative Bettine, and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Appropriations and Financial Affairs, and members of the Joint Standing Committee on Health and Human Services. I am Mary Mayhew, Commissioner of the Department of Health and Human Services, and I am here today to speak in support of LR 1852, the Governor's Biennial Budget Proposal, which state fiscal years 2016 and 2017. Although you've heard in the past, the intro that I've shared in previous days, not everyone in the audience certainly has had the benefit of that, but certainly it has a reminder of the offices that are today the focus. For today's public hearings, the focus is on the Office of Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services, Riverview Psychiatric Recovery Center, and Dorothea Dix Psychiatric Center. The Office of Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services has 96.5 legislatively authorized physicians. SAMs had expenditures in state fiscal year 14 of $63.6 million, with $40.8 million of that in general fund expenditures. We are anticipating expenditures of $65.3 million in '15, with $45.7 million of that in general fund expenditures. The baseline general fund budget for SAMs in state fiscal year 16 is $43.2 million and $43.4 million in '17. Inclusive of the department's proposed initiatives, those figures would increase to $51.8 million in state fiscal year 16, or a 20% increase from the legislatively authorized baseline general fund budget, and to $51.9 million in '17, a 19.7% increase from the baseline. Riverview Psychiatric Center has 326.5 legislatively authorized physicians. It had expenditures in state fiscal year 14 of $33 million, with $17.6 million of those in state funds. We are anticipating expenditures of $36.3 million in state fiscal year 15. The baseline general fund budget for Riverview in state fiscal year 16 is $17.9 million, and it is $18 million in state fiscal year 17. Inclusive of the department's proposed initiatives, those figures would increase to $21.2 million in state fiscal year 16, or an 18.7% increase from the legislatively approved baseline general fund budget, and $21.4 million in state fiscal year 17, a 17.9% increase from the general fund baseline budget. Dorothea Dix has 191 legislatively authorized physicians. DDPC had expenditures in '14 of $18 million, with $7.9 million of that in state general funds. We are anticipating expenditures of $19.2 million in '15. The baseline general fund budget for Dorothea Dix in '16 is $8.9 million, and in '17 it is $9.19. Inclusive of the department's proposed initiatives, those figures would increase to $9.2 million in '16, or a 2.7% increase from the baseline, and $9.2 million in state fiscal year 17, a 1.4% increase from the baseline. As the department puts forth its biennial funding request for Riverview, I want to remind the committee members, I want to remind the committee members to recall that certain CMS officials have claimed that, due to decertification, the hospital is ineligible to continue drawing down disproportionate share hospital funds to support its operations. The department continues to disagree with this assertion, and has continued to leverage available federal DISH funds in support of Riverview. That equates to approximately $3.5 million per quarter, or $19.3 million over the five quarters since decertification. To this point, CMS, the Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, has not disallowed any claims for federal funds, participation relevant to Riverview. Most recently in its CMS 6421 review, the agency stated CMS will request a disallowance in the amount of $3,998,080 related to Riverview. Although CMS has made similar assertions in the past, which have ultimately passed without subsequent action, the department simply wishes to highlight the continued risks associated with the DISH funding, as we did during the previous legislative session. While the 125th legislature voted to put money in reserve for Riverview should the federal government ultimately disallow the DISH funding, the legislature did not opt to replace the DISH funds with general fund support last year. In the meantime, absent disallowance, DHHS continues to draw down funds, we continue our legal challenge to the decertification, and we are actively seeking recertification of the hospital, with new leadership, bold reforms underway, and our current biennial request for key initiatives. And with that, I will begin the process of the individual initiatives. On page 254, as part of a consent decree, this initiative is requesting in state fiscal year 16, general fund dollars in the amount of $1,233,947, and a similar amount in state fiscal year 17. This initiative increases the baseline budget for the Bridging Rental Assistance Program, which is a core consent decree service area. This funding would fulfill a need for 210 new BRAP vouchers in '16 and '17, based on a recent estimate of waitlist data. The BRAP voucher program is a core service area of the consent decree, as I mentioned, that requires the department to submit a funding request to address the unmet needs of people with severe and persistent mental illness, including class members at Riverview. BRAP is a transitional, short-term rental subsidy program designed to assist people with psychiatric disabilities with housing assistance until they are independent or receiving a housing choice voucher, or identify an alternative housing placement. This cost-effective and successful program supports an individual living independently in the community, instead of higher costs associated with institutional living options, such as hospitals and residential treatment facilities. The additional funding requested will eliminate the existing waitlist and allow for a rapid turnaround time to award vouchers to people awaiting discharge from psychiatric hospital beds, and you certainly discussed before the challenges when people who are ready to be discharged are unable to because of a lack of appropriate housing options. This cost-effective program is demonstrated with comparing the current cost of a psychiatric hospital stay at more than $1,000 per day, to the average annual cost of a BRAP voucher, which is $5,800 per year. And that concludes that first initiative, Senator?
That's been... Representative Wright.
Good afternoon, Commissioner.
Good afternoon.
Is there a sense about the capacity to absorb the folks who have the BRAP vouchers? Because I did look through the already been provided by the department in the sheets, I just didn't see where there was actually capacity, and I know I've had some folks tell me in Bangor that there's some problem with capacity in the BRAP. Any thoughts on that?
So we can certainly talk about, and really it does get to the geographic as well capacity throughout the state, we can provide you with additional information. We've certainly been working with John Gallagher, the main state housing authority, on this broader issue of supporting the greater availability of housing. There are a number of landlords that certainly want to see a guarantee of available services in order to ensure a more successful housing placement, and we continue to look at ways in which we can work together to help to support that, to provide for greater housing options throughout the state. But we can get you more information in terms of the geographic as it stands today. You're welcome.
Representative Brakey?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Commissioner. I'd just like to skip back to the paragraph above this initiative, where you talk about your continuing efforts to be recertified by CMS. I remember you saying here that it was your belief that CMS would never recertify RPC until, well, as long as the forensic patients were part of that population. And I'm wondering if the bold reforms that you outlined or referenced in that paragraph are going to address some of those issues, and is that some of the cause for the increase in the overall budget? Could you speak to that briefly?
Yeah, I'm not sure, in terms of the question about the overall budget, but let me talk specifically about the decertification. As we mentioned, the goalposts continue to change in our discussions with CMS, and most recently, not in writing but verbally, what we understand is, so long as a majority of the patients at Riverview do not meet hospital level of care, which is largely the forensic population, that CMS will not recertify the hospital. Now, we have not, however, given up. We have certainly ideas about addressing that, but in addition to that, when we initially applied for recertification shortly after the hospital lost certification, the CMS had advised the hospital, as it has other hospitals throughout the country, to establish what is known as a distinct part unit. You are basically decertifying the beds that have the forensic patients, to allow for other sections of the hospital to maintain certification. Part of the litigation that is underway is, we fundamentally disagree with the interpretation that CMS applied to that distinct part unit. We are continuing to look at, not only their interpretation at the regional Boston office, but the fact that there is an inconsistent interpretation of that throughout the country, where other hospitals are distinct part psychiatric hospitals and have retained their certification. So we are representative on parallel tracks, if you will. We're continuing down that path, although ideally we believe the entire hospital should be certified. We are also exploring options for other freestanding facilities, residential settings, for the individuals, the forensic individuals, who do not meet hospital level of care. We are looking at other models around the country and exploring what existing statutory authority, what statutory authority exists today that would allow us to create some models, and what might require additional legislative authority.
Thank you, Commissioner, that was very clear. Are there any initiatives in the current biennial budget proposal that would allow for any kind of planning process, or any kind of other services being provided there?
Because this is, this recent information from CMS was not a part of our development of the biennial budget, it is not included. Now, we are looking at, as I've said, we've looked at other states, we've looked at other models, and are beginning to establish, first and foremost, what is needed for additional statutory authority, what may be needed for additional funding, and working with the governor's office in terms of whether or not that should be part of a standalone piece of legislation, or as part of any further consideration within the biennial budget.
Thank you.
Representative Bettine?
Thank you, Senator, thank you, Commissioner. Following up on that, I mean, above and beyond what the situation is with CMS, if we have people in Riverview Hospital who don't, who would be appropriate for a placement outside of Riverview Hospital, so again, those are avenues that we should be exploring, it isn't just, you know, the issue with CMS, right?
These are not individuals that have been given court authorization to leave the hospital. So these individuals are still today restricted to Riverview. What we are looking at is, it is through the department's authority that they are assigned to the commissioner of the department, they are under the custody of the commissioner for the Department of Health and Human Services, historically that has always been to Riverview, until they have court authorization to be in the community. We are looking at whether or not there is another model that could be used that would still be a secure facility, but not at a hospital level of care.
Correct, but again, above and beyond the issue with CMS, this is something that we should be doing any less.
We certainly have been looking at, Representative, those that are ready for discharge, and certainly have or will be shortly getting court authorization, but the very same issue we were just talking about, about available housing and available services, has long been part of the challenge, which is why we're here today asking for the consent decree funding as a means of developing those resources, and certainly developing those beyond Augusta, which has also been part of the problem with the saturation in Augusta, without having appropriately developed those in Bangor, Lewiston, and Portland. So yes, we are working on those, we certainly have made this request for funding in previous budgets, this will certainly help us explore that. The larger issue is very different in terms of what we want to explore. Riverview was designed to, and assumed to be responsible for, the forensic population. This is new in terms of this development with CMS, and we are now exploring what are the options that we want to continue to explore and potentially bring forward in the form of a proposal.
Right, and again, the issue is, and despite agreeing with you on that, but again, you know, we are being asked to continue to put money at risk with respect to the situation with CMS, and in addition, it would be helpful to me, again, in evaluating these requests, as I've said several times to Mr. Harper when we've talked on mic and off mic, to have in front of us a comprehensive plan about what we're going to do to solve the problems with Riverview.
Yeah, and I think we have had numerous conversations about the comprehensive plan, and you are not being asked to put money at risk. We certainly came forward to the legislature last year with the actual number that would be necessary to replace the general fund, to replace the DISH dollars with general fund dollars. So I understand, but we want to continue to remind of that potential risk should CMS, and it isn't just decertification, we also disagree with whether or not the DISH funding is completely linked to whether or not it is certified through the Medicare hospital licensing provision.
Right, any?
I'm sure we can continue to provide additional information to you.
And again, the thing that has changed for me was, again, we provided additional emergency funding, when we came into the emergency session in 2013, we provided additional funding a couple of times last year in supplemental budgets, we have another bill still pending in front of the legislature to provide emergency funding, but what we're hearing now is, this is not necessarily providing us a clear path to recertification, which ups, in my mind, the urgency of seeing a more comprehensive plan.
We understand, and every time that we have come before you requesting those funds, it has been based upon the most recent guidance we've received from CMS. So again, unfortunately, we don't control the decision-making of CMS, but we are clearly looking at ways in which we can get out from under this constant changes of their policy instruction to us, that is in the best interest, not only of addressing this situation, but the larger system challenges of access to civil beds and timely admission to inpatient psychiatric hospital services.
I want to remind both committees that particularly Health and Human Services Committee will have plenty of time for dialogue with Commissioner and other members of Health and Human Services.
I hope we have the Commissioner to have dialogue with us in front of the committee, so thank you.
Thank you.
On page 255, this is pertaining to increased funding under the consent decree within the Office of Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services. This is requesting in '16, $5,797,300, and in '17, a similar amount. This initiative provides funding to meet legal requirements of the Bates versus DHHS Consent Decree. It funds identified unmet needs in the Mental Health Services Community Programs account for the purposes of providing mental health services to people not eligible for Main Care, and includes funding for services identified in the consent decree that are not reimbursable by Main Care in order to comply with the terms of the settlement agreement. The department has proposed and is advocating for a $5.8 million consent decree budget. The department will continue to monitor needs of persons with serious and persistent mental illness in the coming biennium, and as required by the consent decree, will continue to advocate for funding necessary to meet consent decree obligations. The request of funding provides needed services for people who have a serious and persistent mental illness, and as I've said, are not eligible for Main Care, as well as services not reimbursable by Main Care. Core services currently funded with consent decree funds include community integration, community rehabilitation services, psychiatric medication services, and assertive community treatment. You have a breakdown of the intent for funds and how those are allocated across those various service lines, I will not read those, and you also have in the testimony a description and narrative of each of those service areas. And with that, I will pause.
Seeing no hands up.
On pages 264 and 269.
Page five of 15.
Behind nine of 30, because I have larger thoughts. Yes. It's the same amount, just easier for me. This initiative is requesting general fund dollars in '16 for Dorothea Dix Psychiatric Center of $143,238, and in '17, $148,908. This initiative continues six acuity specialist positions at Dorothea Dix Psychiatric Center to ensure a culture of safety. Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services standards require sufficient staffing to ensure a safe environment. This initiative is necessary to continue efforts to address and mitigate increased patient and staff injury rates, with these positions support greater engagement with patients, supporting the patient's treatment plan, understanding triggers, and helping to effectively de-escalate potential situations based on this intensive patient-centered model. And you have in your testimony a brief description, again, of this job description.
See the notes.
On pages 264, I'm sorry, all the pages, but as you know, there's a lot of splitting of these funds, 264, 265, 269, and 290. We are combining in this an explanation of these funds that are for both Riverview and for Dorothea Dix. It is a continuation of the discussion in the Emergency Spending Bill for '15. This initiative provides funding for a replacement electronic medical record system for Riverview and Dorothea Dix. Replacement need is driven by notice that the existing support and infrastructure for the current EMR system, Meditech, will end, will end, though with latitude to time, will change concurrent with the implementation of a new EMR system. There is both a compliance and fundamental care delivery quality dependency on ensuring an ongoing viable EMR system is in place. The department has partnered with another health system to gain access to a new EMR system that meets the needs of the state. In partnership, the state's implementation cost and ongoing annual maintenance expense for the replacement EMR system has nearly cut the cost of this project in half versus what the state could purchase independently. And as I mentioned, this continues in initiative proposed in ALU 236. Pages 264 and 269. This initiative real allocates funding between the general fund and the other special revenue funds, based on the federal medical assistance percentages changes for employees at Dorothea Dix. The initiative adjusts funding to reflect the increase in the federal matching rate from 61.88% in '15 to 62.6% in '16. This will result in a blended rate of 62.4% beginning July 1st, 2016. This is also based on an estimated rate of 62.6% beginning July 1st, 2017. On pages 265 and 290, this initiative provides funding for staff training. Staff training is necessary to gain, develop, and renew skills, knowledge, and abilities to provide state-of-the-art, consumer-centered, inpatient psychiatric care. This initiative continues, and initiative included in the Department's '15 supplemental request. These funds are in addition to approximately $47,000 already budgeted and available. Additional funds will provide resources to continue the three main training components at Riverview: motivational interviewing, nonviolent communication, and mindfulness in a psychotherapeutic environment. We have currently had just over 100 staff complete the first two components, and are concluding the course design for the third. In addition, we have increased the training requirements for acuity specialists to include enhanced behavioral management training. Additional funds will be used to continue all of these components. Finally, we are also just beginning a new course in multicultural sensitivities in a care environment.
Representative Jordan?
Thank you very much. Commissioner, is this the program that you're doing with University of Maine and Augusta?
While this will likely complement, this does not specifically relate to the funding associated with that, but I'm certain that Jay can help provide any missing pieces to that, if you can follow up.
I was just trying to understand that.
I think there may be a separate request around that.
Okay.
Pages 265 and 290.
This initiative is requesting general fund dollars of $54,618 in '16, and $54,327 in '17. This initiative provides funding for one full-time contracted pharmacist to provide sufficient coverage, as well as substantially increasing compliance with the Center of Medicare and Medicare Services renewed, reviewed indicators. This initiative continues, again, an initiative that was included in the '15 Emergency Spending Bill. The American Society of Health System Pharmacists survey hospitals on an annual basis to determine pharmacist levels. In a 2014 survey, indicated that staffing level, on average, was three pharmacists for a hospital with 50 to 99 beds. We are currently at 2.45 pharmacists, and the increase would put us at 3.4 pharmacists for the 92 beds. This will bring us to the norm for a hospital this size. The increase above the standard is due to the fact that Riverview also maintains an outpatient clinic serving over 50 forensic patients. RPC and DDPC is a reminder contract for all pharmacists, because state line salaries have not been comparable to private sector pay. The issue was recruitment and retention, Riverview has contracted for this, their pharmacists since 2002, and Dorothea Dix since 2005.
Questions?
Pages 266 and 290. This is requesting general fund dollars of $4,847 in '16, and $5,306 in '17. This initiative... This initiative reorganizes two mental health worker, two physicians, two acuity specialist physicians to address the needs of the hospital. The Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services require sufficient staffing to ensure a culture of safety. We have seen tremendous success with the introduction of acuity specialists at the hospital in our forensic unit. We currently have eight acuity specialists at the hospital. We're requesting four in the Emergency Spending Bill in '15 and requesting another 12 in the biennial budget. As a result of these new physicians, the hospital has experienced a reduction in use of restraint and seclusion and in emergency psychiatric interventions. This initiative is necessary due to increased patient and staff injury rates, and again, you have a physician description of this under the previous initiative related to Dorothea Dick's. Pages 266 and 290. This is requesting for River View general fund in '16 of $47,746 and $49,636 in '17. This initiative establishes two acuity specialist positions to support a culture of safety for patients and staff. I already expressed the reason for this. Pages 266 and 291. This initiative is requesting $30,854 in '16 and $32,147. This initiative establishes one occupational therapist, two physicians to support discharge evaluations. The occupational therapist positions are necessary to complete discharge evaluations in order to maintain consent decree placement targets and reduce recidivism. Pages 266 and 291, again, a request for River View, a general fund request in '16 of $118,844 and $136,593. This initiative establishes four hospital psychiatrist physicians at River View and reduces all other to fund a portion of the new physicians from funds that were previously used to fund two contracted psychiatrists. The transition from moving contracted hospital psychiatrists to state hospital psychiatrists is necessary to reduce treatment plan errors and maintain stability by using a stable state line positions. Pages 265 and 289. For River View, this is requesting additional general fund dollars of $17,439 in '16 and $17,774 in '17. This initiative establishes one office specialist, two physicians to assist the medical director in maintaining accurate and complete medical records on behalf of clients at River View. The all-other reduction reflects the elimination of a contract or a part-time person to assist in these duties. A need for the creation of this new physician is due to increased accreditation compliance issues. Current part-time contracted staffs are insufficient to maintain records accurately and in a timely fashion. Page 265. This is reallocating funds. This initiative reallocates funding between the general fund and the other special revenue funds based on the federal medical assistance percentages changes for employees at River View. The initiative adjusts funding to reflect the increase in the FMAP. Again, I won't read all of that. That is consistent with what I outlined as it related to Dorothea Dick's. Pages 266 and 291. This is requesting general fund dollars for state fiscal year '16 of $49,888, and in '17, $51,407. This initiative establishes two mental health worker, one physicians. Additional mental health worker, one physicians are necessary to align staffing levels to acuity of care for patients and staff, which corresponds with recommendations of the Independent Consultants Report as ordered by the Portmaster, the Elizabeth Jones Report. Pages 266 and 292. Again, this is requesting general fund dollars for River View of $28,036 in '16, $29,242 in '17. This initiative establishes one field investigator physician in order to streamline the investigative process. This physician will report directly to the Director of Quality and Informatics and will conduct internal investigations related to allegations of abuse, neglect, or exploitation of clients. The physician may also assist with fact-finding and other types of internal investigations. Pages 267 and 293. This is for River View and is requesting general fund dollars of $102,966 in '16 and $106,706 in '17. This initiative establishes four limited-period mental health worker, four physicians through June 17th, 2017. These four limited-period mental health worker, four physicians serve as treatment team coordinators who coordinate the treatment means for patients and help develop and monitor treatment plans. They also audit patient records for compliance with regulations. Physicians will lead to performance improvement activities. Limited-period physicians were created in response to the consultant report, the Elizabeth Jones Report, provided to the Portmaster.
Representative Chorgas. Thank you very much. Just a quick clarification. So do any of these physicians, do they tie into the ones that are before us in the supplemental budget to LD236?
They do, and I had hoped that for everyone that did, we've identified it. I have to say, the investigator position I thought was also reflected in the Emergency '15.
I think it is.
Let us double-check. That should have been referenced there, and I cannot recall specifically if these were in the '15, but we can double-check.
So just to make it clear, so these are continuations, mostly assuming that we fund those positions in the interim. These will just continue those positions.
Yes. I just, and again, I want to apologize if we've not completely acknowledged that for each of these, so we'll double-check.
Quite all right. Thank you.
On pages 267 and 292. This is a continuation of a position that was requested with LD236. And for a physician at River View, requesting $32,377 in state fiscal year '16 and $33,798 in '17. This initiative establishes one social services program specialist, two, to serve as a recruiting specialist, and provides funding for related all other costs. This social services program specialist, two, position will develop partnerships with area colleges and universities in order to actively recruit the most qualified staff in the area. The physician will also be responsible for marketing and development of online as well as printed materials. Workforce development. On pages 267 and 292. This is also continuing positions that were requested in LD236. It's requesting general fund dollars